Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabados of Delmar, together with my co-host Mark Cronin, a statewide news service and JBizTechValley.com.
Rabbi, we have a very special guest with us today, and thank you for the introduction. We have Judy Doche, who's a Common Council member, and she represents areas of Albany and the Ninth Ward, which is Helderberg and the New Scotland Woodlawn neighborhoods. And it's great to have you on the show. You're a freshman legislator, you know? It's great.
Well, thank you for inviting me.
You succeeded Jim Sann, who's been on the show here a couple of times. And, you know, are people still calling Jim, or have you taken over the mantle?
Well, he hasn't told me that people are still calling him.
Okay.
And I certainly get enough calls.
You do, okay. Well, you do a great newsletter, and people, you know, you send out the information of what people need to know, so I'm, and I personally get it, so I'm happy that, you know, you're doing that, so thank you. It's not easy. It takes time.
Well, it does take time, but I think that it's important to do what I can to inform people of what's going on, and then it also gives people an opportunity to provide input to me. I get a lot of correspondence by email.
You're right.
But you know, Judy, that really, we can call you an honorary Jewish Common Council person because you take in really, I don't know if there is a Jewish ghetto in Albany, but there is the Jewish areas, New Scotland and Whitehall, and you really take it all in then. So maybe we can give you the honorary title over here, the Jewish Common Council person.
Well, I wouldn't mind that at all. Let me just see if I can get this.
Put it through the ring.
Up, through the top.
Up through the top.
And not that the Jewish people have any special needs, the truth to tell.
You got it, thank you. Okay. You're now an official engineer.
All right.
Well, the Jewish people don't have any special needs, I would think, and they're just, you know, like everybody else's needs. They love crime and be safe and a good city, so they're really, their needs are just like everybody else's, who's a good citizen's needs.
Correct. I am aware of the fact that there's a number of temples very close to my ward, and also two that are in my ward as well. And I attended the installation of the new rabbi at the Temple Israel and enjoyed that, and I know quite a few of the members there as well.
Yes, you seem very comfortable. I was there with you. I was there at the same time, and in fact, I wrote about it on my blog, JBizTechValley.com, and I have a picture of you on the website also, so there you go.
Well, it's my neighborhood.
I'm glad you're being connected, and you're just not a part-time legislator. You really look like you're a full-time legislator.
Oh, yeah, a little bit more so than I thought I would be. Yeah. It does keep me busy.
It's not a full-time job officially, quote unquote, and I'm sure you put in so many hours, but...
Right. No, it's, there's, it's not officially a full-time job. Most of the council members do have employment outside of the council. I'm retired from the New York State Department of Health. I've worked there in council's office and am glad to bring what I've learned there to this position here.
And you're happy to be out of this New York State Department of Health, I'm sure.
Well, I loved my job there. I really did.
You're the one.
That made the decision to...
No, no, you're the one that enjoyed your job.
Right.
I don't know of anyone else who enjoys the job of working for the Department of Health.
I learned so much in so many challenging issues, and I guess I like challenges and I like learning. I'm definitely a lifelong learner.
Are you on the Health Committee on the Common Council?
I am not. I'm on the Law Committee, Law Buildings and Codes Committee. I'm on the Finance Committee, and then also Housing and Community Development, and I've been enjoying what I'm learning there.
Well, this is very appropriate, my next question's appropriate for the housing and for the development and all that, is the land bank, which is a county issue, but I still, you know, but it's designed to facilitate tearing down older homes that are not historic, I guess, in nature, and then the, and then rebuilding something that's relatively more modern and fits with today's society.
Well, I wouldn't say that it's charged with tearing down buildings. That's not, that's not the priority. The priority is to take vacant buildings.
Yes.
In whatever state they are, and have the community make a decision about the future of that particular building. In some cases, we would hope that some of the buildings would be brought back, because some of the vacant buildings in our city really are gorgeous buildings and worthy of being restored. It's just a matter of the finances often, and that's where the land bank can help and provide some of the...
They give loans. I'm not familiar, so I'm just, Mark's the reporter always, and I'm the regular citizen, even though I'm a rabbi, but I don't know what it is. Maybe our viewers don't know either, if you can define what they're going to do for the buildings.
Well, it's a little unclear, because it's brand-new.
Right.
There's a land bank corporation. The legislation was passed, I think, about a year ago, and we did opt to incorporate one, and it's just getting off the ground. Actually, right now, they're advertising for an executive director. That's how new it is.
So where do I put my application?
Well, definitely go to the county, Albany County website, if anybody is interested in that particular position. They are, there is a call for applications for that, and also for an advisory board, which would be community members. So the funding, right now, I believe that there's $2 million. There's at least $1 million from the county, and I believe the city and the state also have another, about a million dollars that has been committed that would be used to purchase some of these buildings, and also help other people renovate them, potentially, in some cases, actually pay for the demolition costs for some of them.
And some of these buildings could be in your, the Ninth Ward. They're not all down in the lower wards, right?
That's correct, and that's part of the decision-making that that board is charged with.
You know, I always, you know, I know New York City is not Albany, Albany's not New York City, but on the other hand, I mean, maybe there is a connection, because New York City and, you know, you're familiar with, and I was, because I go to the New York for many times for the Baus headquarters, but you take these literally slums, let's be clear about it, Harlem, Bedford, Stein, you read that everybody wants to go, you know, this is people with money in the land, so I'm thinking, I mean, I mean, it's not like an impossible dream, that's what I'm saying. If New York City could do it, I'm looking at Albany and saying, hey, look, it's a beautiful city, you know, all right, there's rundown buildings which are an eyesore. On the other hand, you know, for the right people, hey, living across from a park, you know, I mean, this is, these are beautiful, like you say, beautiful buildings, the structures are building, all right, maybe they need a little gutting out, you know, and the fresh paint, a coat of paint, but, you know, it's not such a wild dream as I'm saying, you know, if I'd say, oh, you can take the, these low-income houses and you can make them fabulous. You know, 10 years ago, maybe the rabbi, you're dreaming, but New York City's doing it in the worst areas, and that's what I'm saying. I think the dream and the hope, maybe that's what the land bank is trying to do, is to regentrify, you know, these, these old buildings, because it's the thing that's done. I know Chicago's doing it, the worst neighborhoods in Chicago, people are telling me, New York City, so maybe Albany could be the new, I mean, cities are in, that's what it is.
Well, absolutely, there's been a resurgence of interest in living in the cities, and Albany actually has a lot of developments going on, large buildings that are being turned into condominiums and apartments, and that's very exciting, and I think to go along with that, having some of these individual properties be able to be developed by individuals. And really, when you look at the price of a building in the city of Albany compared to so many of these other cities, and what we also have to offer in the way of theater and concerts and museums and the riverfront and recreation and being just two and a half hours to New York City, we have a lot to offer for relatively little for people who want to invest in our city. And I think the main question is whether or not people continue to do what they did, which is move to the suburbs, or whether people are going to be, being more focused on living in the city. And I think having a walkable, our goal of having a walkable city makes it very desirable for people to live here. That's something that a lot of people have a lot of interest in.
One of the things that I want to pick up on what the rabbi said was, you know, like in Brownsville, they regentrified so much that the condos are going for a million dollars, and I'm just stunned, because I grew up in Brooklyn and I'm just, that was a neighborhood I was told never to go to, stay away from.
My son lives in Prospect Heights, and he and his girlfriend would love to buy condominium.
But they can't afford it.
Right.
And I think, Rabbi, you have a son that lives near there.
You know, there's a good part, I mean, I'm sure some people made a lot of money buying, you know, in the boom. On the other hand, you feel for the young people that, you know, you want to buy a house, that's the American dream, to buy a house and live there, and here it is a million dollars just to, that's why, it's interesting, because that's why a little bit I push people and, you know, I want to deal with the Jewish people, of course. I said, you know, you're crowded down there, you know, Albany, the area is very good, and you're going to get a real deal, you know, by buying a house up here compared to New York City, or not even a deal, you can't afford it there, and here you can't. I don't know, that's why, I guess I'm always pushing that we got something good around here, you say, close to New York City, I'm not talking about go to Wyoming, you know, in the middle of nowhere. I'm talking about a few hours from New York, so you got your cake and eat it too, you got New York, you got a nice city, you got a nice price for a house, some affordable house. I don't know, that's why I think that there really could be an opportunity there to really build this up.
I do want to put in a plug for my particular ward, which is a great ward to live in in terms of the walkability, and it's like living on, you know, a lot of our...
Just maybe define, like New Scot, define what that is in general.
Basically, it's from Albany Med, along New Scotland Avenue from Albany Med to St. Peter's Hospital.
Right.
And essentially, along New Scotland, going over to Hackett, and then it also goes in the other direction over to Woodlawn, and as far, parts of it, as far as Madison Avenue. So there's just lovely blocks, houses that are selling right now for $150,000, three-bedroom, two-bath houses with lovely yards, and it's walking distance to CVS, a dozen restaurants.
I don't want to put a damper on your enthusiasm for your neighborhood, okay, but I got to tell you, these houses were built for a different era than we're living in today. You have these nice, large houses with a one-car garage.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have, I mean, nowadays, people, women like...
Most of the houses I'm talking about is a detached garage, if you have a garage.
Detached, at all.
Right.
You have a detached garage, which means you have to go outside through the rain or it's snow, and, you know, it's not convenient, and, you know, and plus, you know, walk-in closets are a rarity. I mean, there's so many things in terms of the heating structure and all that, that, you know, it's just not today's way of living.
Right.
They're in, they're oil, so some of them still have oil tanks, and it's just not ecologically friendly. You know, I just look, I know people who live there, and I look at these homes, and I'm just like shaking my head, and the rooms are postage stamp size, where people today like larger bedrooms and larger rooms, and, I don't know, I've been looking around, I live on Hackett, and I've been looking around for another home, and I'm enjoying my house a lot more now that I see what else is out there.
Right.
And, but, you know, it's, I think some of these homes need to be torn down and rebuilt as a, in terms of larger and more modern settings and structures than what they are today, and you can love, you can love the homes.
But a lot of people are talking, a lot of people are talking about downsizing, though, and going in the other direction.
And that's when people go to condos, like the ones on Whitehall Road there, you know, Whitehall and New Scotland on that corner, but, you know, it's still, when you want to build a fam...
I agree, the condos are a great option for a lot of people who are looking to downsize.
Downsized, but if you want to have a family and you grow a family, and you're young, you know, this is going to be a temporary, it's going to be a transient ward, because people are not going to want to stay there for much long, you know, more than seven years, eight years, whatever, until they realize that they're outgrowing their house. That's how I view the neighborhood.
Well, I've been where I live for 26 years now, and I, granted, I have a larger home, but I also have a lot of neighbors who have been there from even before I was there and raised their families there and are very happy with it.
Yes, there are, it's a home for everyone.
That's right.
Everyone has different styles and different tastes.
Well, that's it.
And I'm, you know, what my tastes are and what I'm looking for just isn't around the, the up wards that I can find right now, so I'm just saying.
How about the governor's mansion for you, Mark? If you want to live in Albany there.
I want some of that, you grew up in, or raised in Osning, I presume, not the prison, but...
Right.
Yeah, okay. They let you out?
Yeah.
And then you went to outside Rochester, Pittsburgh?
Right. I spent my junior, part of my junior year in Pittsburgh, and then I moved to New York City.
Is that because your parents moved, they got a...
My father moved up there. My family was split up, and, and I was, my father had custodied me and my younger brother, and my two older siblings, my three older siblings lived with my mother in New York City, where she went to live. And then eventually, I went to live with her before going to college.
Wow, okay, so do you still, you have five, four siblings, five children in the family altogether?
Correct.
You're all in touch, you're all...
We do.
Yeah, good.
We do stay in touch.
That's important.
Yeah.
You know, and you went to SUNY New Paltz.
Correct.
Graduated cum laude in '76.
Right, oh, he's done his research.
Well, it's a, you have a bachelor's in psychology and political science, so that's good, being in the legislature, because you can have, use your psychology in the...
I will tell you, as a lawyer, I often found the psychology degree came in more handy.
That's right. And then you were up here since 1977. You worked for the State Assembly and the Higher Education Services Corporation before attending law school.
Correct.
Wow.
Correct. I needed to take off some time to save some money to be able to afford to go to law school.
And then you went to Albany Law and graduated cum laude in '83.
Right.
And your husband is City Court Judge Thomas Keefe.
Right.
And you've been married since '81, so you got married while you were in law school, I presume?
That's correct.
See, I could do that, man.
Yeah, right.
And you have two adult sons?
That's correct. They just turned 26 and 28.
Are they out of the house?
Yeah, one lives in Brooklyn and the other one in Big Sky, Big Sky, Montana.
So you're now an empty nester.
That's correct, but staying plenty busy.
And so you have one room in the house that's just for the legislative work, and another room that Tom Keefe does his lawyer, his court judgeship's work, background work for his judgeship?
It's not quite, it probably should be assigned like that a little bit more, but you know, the kitchen table works quite well for a lot of our stuff, you know?
So what is it that you like about the led, Common Council that led you to want to run for this seat?
Well, it's...
I mean, what, you know, it's a lot of meetings, it's not a whole lot of money, you don't need, you don't need the health benefits. You probably have that through your husband, so...
Actually, through my retirement.
Retirement?
Right.
So why take this on? Why do this?
Because I felt like it was the perfect job for me. I've been an advocate of sorts since I started at New Paltz in '72, and have advocated for different issues. I just take an interest, and I'm not somebody, I see a problem and I want, I'm compulsive about wanting to solve problems and being active and involved in my community. So I was involved in Little League, I was involved in the PTA, I started a babysitting co-op in the Helderberg neighborhood, when shortly after I moved there, a great group of friends that I've been very blessed to know, and my kids kind of grew up with their kids, and so I've just been involved, and so I like people, I like being involved, and then, of course, my legal skills and my 25 years of working for the Department of Health and experience in problem-solving on some fairly difficult issues. I like to listen to and understand what the problem is, and then be collaborative.
What are the problems now, to see, you know, so now you're president, they, you're obviously in city council, what are the problems that you see or that there are that you have to deal with?
I was going to ask something similar in that, do you think that this is a, is it everything that you thought it would be, now that you've been in there several months?
Yes, and more.
And more, okay. And...
Because I didn't anticipate oil trains and casinos.
And smoking and, no smoking in public parks.
Oh, well, of course, I anticipate things like that will come up as, you know, societal issues and, you know, societal norms, and what do we think is a good rule to have or not have in our community, and listening to different people's opinions about that.
Are you a smoker?
I used to smoke, right, and, and there, and that ordinance passed 14 to zero.
Right.
Michael O'Brien abstained, and I think that one of the reasons why it passed is because there are so many reform smokers on the Common Council.
How long has it been since you puffed?
Since before law school. When I quit smoking, I decided if I can quit smoking, I can make it through law school.
This is hard.
It was that hard, and it did take me three times to do it.
I remember Governor Cuomo said that he cut, he stopped cold turkey and never went back. Mario Cuomo.
Mario, right.
Yes, he just stopped one day, just put the cigarettes down, and he never picked it up again.
Right.
That's the toughest thing to do, like you said, three times, just...
Right, right, yeah.
I mean, quitting is so easy, because you keep doing it.
But you can't, you can't stop harshly, I mean, I know some people who do with the help of some of the patches or whatever, at the time, there was not, none of that, so each time I did do it sort of cold turkey, and eventually, I was committed enough just to make sure I never picked up another cigarette, I couldn't touch another cigarette.
So let's talk briefly about the oil tankers, what's, you know, they got these air samples, they want to take air samples, they want to take, I mean, it's just not, city of Albany, it's not just the lower wards down by the river, it's Ward of Lee, Cahoes, it's more of a county issue.
It's our entire country, really.
Well, it starts in North Dakota, and then it goes all along there.
I mean, that's a long distance that we're exposing a lot of people to that kind of risk.
So what's wrong with that?
What's wrong with it?
I mean, we...
It's a risk.
We expose people to risks by driving our cars. I mean, everything has a risk to it.
Absolutely.
It's really not an Albany issue either, isn't it?
It's not a city, I don't think it's a city.
Yeah, city Albany can't...
Although the mayor of Albany...
Well, it is, it is a big city issue, because we have so many government buildings. I really see it, and for myself, something I did not anticipate when I ran, as all of a sudden, I see myself as being a steward for our historic assets in the, in the city of Albany, as well as of the river. And I guess I should have seen the latter. The former, I kind of anticipated a certain amount, but the latter, I hadn't really given much thought to as a Common Council member. But when you're transferring oil onto these barges and sending them down the river, you're relying on people to be on top of things and do things right, and the consequences of somebody doing something wrong are huge, and we've seen that in environmental disasters, and I am concerned about that aspect of it, as well as the risk to people as existed in Canada.
I've asked other guests on the program, why not just put a wall up, since the tracks were there first, then some brainiac decided to put a federally-funded housing development that was approved by the city, you know, right next to the tracks, just put a wall up that, you know, if...
When we were having one-tenth the amount of cargo, hazardous cargo going through that area.
But now that we have the increase in it, why don't we put a wall up, like we have along the thruway, the sound barriers, something that looks nice, and then, you know, and have that being a protective wall, so that if there is an incident on the riverside, that it won't, it'll impact minimally or reduce the impact on the residential side? I mean, it doesn't seem...
Well, those particular homes that are there, that housing is just one part of the concern. The train tracks go all along the river from Cahoes and also come from the west further, and so actually are bordering on parts of the 12th Ward and the 4th Ward coming, you know, from that direction. We need increased safety overall with regard to these shipments, and so the wall itself, yes, that's one possible, that's one piece.
Right, but it's a, but it's a quick, short, you know, it's a, it's a solution that could be done relatively quickly, and then deal with the longer-term effects of the air quality and the asthma and all the other issues that you need for safer trains and other things. But in the meantime, you're actually quickly preventing an accident from impacting the residential side of the tracks by putting the wall up.
Well, for those particular residences, there, like I say, there's a lot of other residences that are very close proximity to railroad tracks carrying those trains.
And down by Ward of Lee, it goes right by, I mean, Bob's Diner, I'm told, is spitting distance to the, as we say in Brooklyn, to the tracks and to the trains. I mean, you know, and then you got the stewards right there, and then Cahoes has a larger, but, you know, you can't legislate what goes on in Ward of Lee and Cahoes, you've got to think of the city of Albany. So in the city of Albany, just put up a, you know, let the, you know, ask your friends in, in the Senate, US Senate, Chuck Schumer and Kirsten Gillibrand, to get a few thousand dollars and, you know, just get the wall up, and just for immediate protection.
I personally think, when, I, when you start looking at, at spending that kind of money, I think that you need a more comprehensive plan before you start dealing with it piecemeal. And part of that is what is happening with regard to the air quality samples, and what kind of exposure do people really have in that vicinity? So you put up the wall, you spend the money putting up the wall, and then you decide that the people need to be moved out of there anyway?
Okay, so you still got a safety wall there, so that no matter what's there, even if the people get moved out, you still have a safety wall.
So for how far? So for how far do we have that safety?
There's no end to it though, Mark, that's what she's saying.
No, you got along the thruway for miles and miles, you got these sound barriers, so you can do it for miles and miles, it doesn't...
And that's...
You got to look at a whole plan, I think, what she's saying.
Well, that's what you're saying, I don't disagree, but I'm just pointing out my thoughts, and this is the exchange that we're having.
Right, right.
So let me, I want, I'm sorry.
All right, we have a few more minutes.
I just want to ask you about education, the Albany City Schools, you were one time the vice president of the school board. Was there a policy in place that school board members, who are the elected officials on the school board, they were not allowed to speak to the media? Was there any sort of policy about that?
No, there was, there was not any formal policy, there was a certain amount of recognizing that the better person to make statements to the press would be the president of the school board.
Or the superintendent?
Right.
Right.
And certainly, there was a greater level of caution and desire to speak with one voice. The theory being, essentially, you are working together as a corporate board, essentially, not, it's not a corporation, but the equivalent of a corporate board, and you're making decisions collectively. And once you make the decision, then you just, even if you were on the other side, you stand behind that decision, and you don't sort of churn the waters, you know, continue to churn the waters. Certainly, before a decision was made, you know, I think all of us did a great deal of listening, there was a huge public comment period throughout the time I was on the board, and I respected the opinions that came forth, and people certainly talked to me, et cetera. I'm not somebody who loves going out and, and talking to the press, no offense, but...
No, but this is why we're so glad to have you on the program, but I'm just saying, right now, it's the president, you know, there's a, a school board member who's Jewish, Sue Adler, and it's like she can't come on the program, because there's this, like you were saying, this, this voice that says the, we have to speak in one term, and either the president, Rose Brandon, or the Dr. V., who's the superintendent, are the only ones who could speak for the board, but we're elect, we're not electing Dr. V., we're electing these school board members. They should be able to have their opinions known, and, and we, and I find that incomprehensible, because when it's a board member, that's a private corporation, okay? We're not electing them, the, you know, we're, you know, the people are electing these, these school board members, and they don't want to be responsive to people.
I'm not comfortable commenting on why Sue Adler may choose to come on your show or not come on your show.
Yes, I know. I know, you don't want to take specifics, but I'm just...
That's very, that's very speculative, I think.
But I'm just bringing it up.
Right.
We only have one, two minutes. You know, it just backed home, and something that you can't control, city council is just like the infrastructure. I know there's recently been problems like with over floods, I mean, it wasn't like, all right, a tornado, you can't do anything about, but just a few inches of rain, and some streets were just totally, right at rush hour, just not unpassable.
Absolutely.
I mean, is there, do you're dealing with that at the city council level?
Well, let's first be clear, it wasn't just a few inches of rain, it was...
Two and a half inches in a short amount of time.
Well, I'm told three to four inches in an hour, and that's unprecedented in the city of Albany, is what I'm told, so that's significant.